All right, do I have a motion to re-convene the regular meeting?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Role call.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Forsma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
All right, this time we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance and I would like, um, let's see. Akash, if you'd like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Next, we have a resolution recognizing Skills USA student. Here we go.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Resolution recognizing the accomplishments of Lockport Township High School student Emily Doe. Whereas Lockport Township High School Skills USA Emily Doe was awarded second place at Nationals, competing in the architectural drafting competition, securing a few scholarships to the college or tech school of her choice in the future. Whereas Emily Doe has brought honor and distinction to herself, her family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 21st day of August 2023. Congratulations.
Emily, are those your parents?
Yes.
Oh, congra- your brother?
Yes.
Congratulations. The Board of Education, congratulations. Congratulations, everyone.
Amazing.
Amazing. All right, all right, just need a vote, just need, do I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
Someone?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. On this one, where do I go? Okay, all right, okay. All right, now we have the seating of our two student board members, Chelsea Osay and Victoria Del Ponte. Do I have a motion to accept students Chelsea Osay and Victoria Del Ponte as student board members for the 2023-2024 school year?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Navara and second by Ms. Luanne Johnson. Role call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Forsma?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simone Rogers? Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a?
Call back.
Sandra?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to accept students Akash Patel and McKenna Orico?
I'll make that motion.
As student board members serving on the board committees for the 2023-2024 school year.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. Navara. Role call.
Forsma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
All right, okay, at this time, we're going to have administer the oath to all four of you. So I don't know if you want to stand?
I would say it would be appropriate to stand, you know, you can follow along, all right?
Stand over here. All right.
Chelsea could probably join them if you'd like to do a little bit of closing work.
Okay, all right, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, speak to me. All right, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
All right, in accordance with the Constitution of the United States,
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability,
I further swear and affirm that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving as a faithful protector of the student to the school district's assets. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in ethical and quality education of every student in the school district.
As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in ethical and quality education of every student in the school district.
I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School.
I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Lockport Township High School.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environmental design to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting their education of our children in compliance with state law.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community school to advance the vision for Lockport Township High School.
I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of our students and our community schools to advance the vision of Lockport Township High School.
Lastly, I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Congratulations.
You know, and parents, I don't want to speak for you, President Lopez Caneva, but you know, if you want to get in and you need a better angle, just, it's time to do it. Don't feel like you have to be telling. Congratulations to all the parents here to, you know, win for you as well, but feel free to take the shot that you need to take, individually, together, you know, now's the time. All the board members are reminding, wow, we have a lot to do. Is my job list really that long?
Congratulations, guys.
Parents, you're welcome to stay. And see how they operate, right? Okay. All right, or are you free to leave?
Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever board members ask questions for the audience. So the way that the Board has designed this is that Ms. Del Ponte and Ms. Osay will join us for our monthly meetings. The Board also has other meetings, Curriculum Committee, and that'll be Ms. Orico, congratulations. And then we have another very important committee, Finance and Facilities, and that will be Mr. Patel. So for the monthly meetings, Ms. Del Ponte and Ms. Osay. For the schedule of Curriculum Committee meetings, the Board splits itself into smaller committees. I think we have Curriculum Committee coming up on September 12th. And Finance and Facilities coming up on August 28th, one week from today. So there'll be the student board members on those committees. Thanks for the question.
Okay, all right, moving on to, yes. At this point, I'd like to appoint Mr. Michael Travis as the Secretary for Pro Tem, if that's okay?
Okay.
All right, okay, all right. I don't think we need a vote.
No, you do not, you can appoint.
Okay, all right, all right, moving on to our reports, Student Government. We have Gianna, Aleem, Lola, McKenna, and Josh.
Make you feel welcome for your first report. And if there are, you might need one extra chair. There's a chair right there, Aleem. If you don't mind, one extra traditional chair. Thank you.
Okay, for the record, we're going to start, let's see, why don't we start with this? You are?
Josh.
Okay.
I'm Lola Rodriguez and I'm a senior.
I'm McKenna O'Brien and I'm a junior.
I'm Gianna Freary and I'm a junior.
I'm Aleem Musini and I'm a junior.
Okay, welcome. All right, Student Government.
You guys go ahead and do your report. Whoever wants to go first, you know, kind of what we talked about this morning. Probably tonight, we just want to know, you know, it's your first report. So don't be intimidated by all these board members. You know, maybe just your name, you know, a little bit about your year, and then like, how's the start of school? Right, I think, you know, then sometimes board members ask you questions, right? So you had a couple topics and, you know, go right ahead.
I'm Gianna. I'm really excited about all of the extracurriculars I'm involved in this year. And the start of school for me was really good. The 9:30, 9:45 start on Wednesday, I think, was really helpful in the morning to get some extra time and get me prepared for the day. And then I think the shortened class periods, like, was the perfect amount of time for teachers to go through their syllabus. And I think the, like, Wednesday was the perfect day to start, the school day.
Great.
I'm Josh. I'm excited to be more part of the school this year. And I think the scan, the scannings, like, at the start of the morning could be like more, like, a better part for, like, safety for the school, but also, like, it could be, it could, like, be a hassle to some students, like, to slow them down in the morning.
I'm Aleem, and I'm excited for our sports season, obviously. Everyone is, right? Football, you know. You know, one thing that is an advantage to students is Compass. Compass time is really useful, you know, in ways that students can get extra help from teachers. You know, you can schedule yourself, teachers can schedule you, and you just get a lot of work done during those hours.
I'm McKenna. Carry on with what we said. I think that the Compass and the first, I think tomorrow's the first day that we can start signing up. I think that the, the days where we had to go to our home port were really, really good, really. A lot of kids, I feel like, learned a lot of things. You could go over your bus routes and go over safety procedures. It was just a good refresh beginning of the year.
I'm Lola. I'm really excited just for my senior year. And then I'm excited for Homecoming, which of course, we're in charge of, and just all the events that we host as a school.
Yeah, that was our question, was how's Homecoming plans coming? Have you guys had an opportunity to meet?
We haven't had an opportunity.
It's coming soon.
It's coming soon.
Yes.
Questions, board members, any questions? I have one. Do we have a Homecoming theme you guys have thought about at all?
Not yet. I don't think we.
Yeah, okay.
You know what we'll probably do as a group is get surveys from a majority of the students. Get, you know, something out there to, you know, get ideas from everyone and narrow it down to a couple of topics and, you know, choose from there. We're a good ideal.
We're back inside though? Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We'll see you next month. Thanks so much. And as I mentioned this morning, you are welcome to stay, but we won't be, our feelings won't be hurt if you head home for a meeting, so great to meet you guys.
All right, AFT report, this is fine.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Great to be back, excited for another school year. I am starting my 20th year, so I'm very excited. But with the start of a new school year, I do need to thank some people. I know a lot of people think that nothing happened around here over the summer, but for some departments, it's the busiest time of the year. So to our office professionals and the other staff who stepped up for the Welcome Back Days, we wouldn't have been able to do it without them, so thank you. Maintenance, I don't know when you sleep, but it makes us proud to walk through the doors every day. The floors are sparkling, everything is where we need it to be, so thank you. To Tony, your team, administration, department chairs. There's not many schools that today can say they have every position filled, but we can. So that doesn't go unnoticed, so we thank you for that. So with that, I look forward to working very closely with the negotiation year coming up, but I'm excited for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
IASB report, Ms. Luanne Johnson.
Well, I know, there's nothing new, just a triple I.
Just a triple I conference coming up.
That, that, that's even kind of a little bit sleepy right now, just because all the preparations have taken place, all the registrations have taken place, you know, those kind of things, so not really anything new. Probably the only thing that I would share with the Board is I was invited by IASB to participate in their strategic planning. They sent superintendents, I don't know if they sent all superintendents, but an invitation, they had three sessions. I think Kathy and I decided I would, maybe, I think it's September 14th. They're seeking some feedback, and so I'm happy to do that.
Great.
And then another thing is, is it costable?
Costful, yeah.
Yeah, they're in the planning stage. If you go to the ISAB website, you'll see the link, but there's, it's basically under construction. They're planning.
All right. Next, we have Foundation Report. You'll say it off.
Good evening. Just wanted to touch on a few things that I listed in my report. We had our first poker tournament on the 10th of August. And thank you to Ann, and then Matt came, Matt does her help came, she supported, so I'm grateful to them. It was successful, and we hope to host seven more of those in the next two years. The license that we acquired with the state allows us to do a total of eight over a two-year time period. We fully intend to do all of that, and then I feel like, you know, because of course, there's a fee with that, so every time we do it, it reduces the fee for each one. So we're very excited that that worked out. Paul Ivnik hosted us at his place at Nick and Ivy's downtown and didn't charge us for this location, so it was all around a very good event. Taste of Lockport is coming up, the 23rd of September. We have Maggie Speaks coming, and the opening band is Friday at 5:00. We've got, sponsors are in place and some vendors are starting to roll in, so we're excited to host that event. That stands to, we hope that to be kind of like the premier event that the Foundation does, where we raise the most money and involve the most people in our community. So it's an event that I, I like because everyone can participate, so I'm excited about that. And then I wanted to bring up that we are hoping to host, actually, we've already started kind of planning to host the Nutcracker for the community here at Lockport Township High School. We'd like, we would bring in professionals to do that. It would be December 8th through 10th. And instead of paying a hundred and something dollars a ticket, we can charge families more like $20 a ticket. So it's something, it's something that people can do with their families and hopefully make it some sort of tradition, if not the Nutcracker, then work with the production company to, to bring things into our community and encourage more people to come through our doors and be a part of Lockport Township High School in that way. And lastly, I'd want to remind everyone, including especially the teachers, that the, the Foundation puts $5,000 in our teacher grant budget line, and we never spend it. So I would, just a reminder, so if anyone's talking to teachers and they need extra money, that the Foundation would love to support them with grants. I think everyone knows that we do scholarships, right? So that's something that we're known for, but also, we want to make sure that the teachers feel supported through the Foundation as well.
What is the grant money, what can it be used for?
It can be used for special projects. There's even, I mean, if they were choosing to try and bring in a speaker, kind of anything additional. In the past, we've tried to support, you know, startup for new clubs and things like that that isn't normally funded through the district funds. The great thing about the grants is that it comes to the Board, and Dr. McBride sits on the Board with us. So when we have those discussions, the board members of the Foundation also get the opportunity to understand why something is or isn't funded through regular district funds. But, so we're going to be busy, but we're, you know, it's exciting to get, to get things rolling with the Taste, and then I am excited about the Nutcracker. I think it'll be just something really nice for our community.
Is the Taste going to be food trucks, like, going to be food trucks and restaurants?
There's two, yeah, right now, there's two food trucks and three restaurants, so that's.
Is there more, the process for the food trucks, the vendors, are you still taking?
We are, and we aren't charged, yeah, and the one thing that the Board, the Foundation Board decided is that we will not charge local vendors for, to participate in the Taste of Lockport. We felt strongly that the school goes to them for donations for lots of things. So the participation, usually if you participate in an event or a community fair, there's a fee that goes along with it, but we're not, we're not asking that for anyone. We're hoping they just come and participate. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Legislative report.
Legislative report, there really is not much to, not much to share except for, this is, there's, I am not going to read this, but I wanted to provide all of board members with just two very important bills that now are signed into law. We highlighted them in the spring, they passed the House and the Senate. On August 4th, I think Governor Pritzker signed 80 total new bills that have passed into public law, and the two. So some of the law firms that we work with, I shared their briefs on that. The first one that I have on in your report relates to a massive change in Pair of Performance Evaluation Reform Act, that was 2012. And what it does, and without getting deep into it, it, it sort of reconstitutes tenure when an individual person can achieve tenure. It moves from, you can only achieve tenure after four years, period, that's just the way it is, to pathways for achieving tenure in three years, two years, based on your rating, how you're rated. We have the, we have four designations in rating. How does an excellent rating or proficient rating factor into that? So that's a, a major change. It's kept Mr. Kandari and Mrs. Kishla, I'm, you know, very busy because we have so many different procedures that we have to overhaul to align. And it was signed on August 4th, so a little bit, you know, right before school started. The other public act is in terms of districts and fund balances. This is in law. This doesn't impact us, but I think it's important to know it. And that is that if you're a district for three consecutive years, if you're carrying fund balances 2.5 times your annual budget. For us, that would be if we had fund balances, just about $168 million. If we were at that over three years, we would have to file a plan on how we plan to draw that down. Even with your goal of six to 12 months of cash on hand, we're not anywhere near two and a half times. The intent of those fund balances is that they're appropriately to have a fund balance to address things like roofs, auditoriums, but they're not really there as a savings account for, for the district. That's not really the intention of fund balances year after year in this bill. Now, public law is to, to ensure that, but does not affect us.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the public comment follow-up of July 17th, 2023.
You bet. We had two visitors to the Board. We had Mrs. Jessica Miller and her daughter, Ms. Charlotte Miller. Charlotte is a freshman at Central, starting out, very gifted student in AP and honors classes. And just to refresh the Board's memory, Mrs. Miller and Charlotte shared the inaccessibility of Central Campus. That Central Campus has the very minimum of ADA compliance, given its age. I think they really pointed out, they're aware in many different ways, touring the building, your board mem, meetings, that you're looking at a renovation and preservation of Central Campus. And they championed that, and really spoke to, in their own case, situations that they're in where it will be difficult uh, for Charlotte to navigate the building. And then concerns um, that they had about even an emergency situation. Um, you know, how would Charlotte, if she's on the third floor, get, you know, out of the building? Called, um, Mrs. Miller, uh, had a good conversation with her, and really that conversation was just her, um, you know, support for work to renovate that building, I think the bottom line of what she feels is that if you, if we as a district will keep it open as a school building, it should be accessible to all students going to that building. You know, I think like any parent, she would like her child to go right into the main entrance, which Charlotte cannot do right now. That was it.
Thank you. Right, there is no public comments. Moving on to notices and communications, there is no communication, freedom of information requests, we got two of them, they're in your board packet. Moving on to our approval items, do I have a motion to approve the open session minutes from the July tenth, twenty twenty-three special board meeting? All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Roll call, are there, I'm sorry, are there any questions or due to those minutes? Uh, was it July?
Uh, this is the tenth.
This was the tenth, I think you were here, yeah, I think you were here, I don't think Marty was here, no, I think you were working. Yes, you remember, okay. All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Forsma?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, next we have our regular board meeting, open session minutes. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the open session minutes from the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting? All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by Dr. Simone Rogers. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Stay.
Forsma?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. And then I think I'm gonna do, separate these, because I know that, well, you were not here for the seventeenth, and neither, okay? All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes from the July tenth, twenty twenty-three? It's been motioned, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis, and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any additions to those minutes, or corrections? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Forsma?
I'm staying.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Next, we have the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three me, meeting minutes of number one, and the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meetings of number two. All right, roll call. And that's, sorry, roll call, need a motion for that.
Some.
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, and second by Ms. Johnson, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Forsma?
Stay.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Stay.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the August twenty twenty-three board member expenses and employee travel expenses? I can make that motion.
Sir.
It's been motioned by Lopez Caneva, and second by Mr. Travis, are there any questions to those? Hearing none, roll call.
Simone Roger?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Forsma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, next we have our treasury report, we'll have Ms. Stephanie Croy.
Hi, good evening. Treasurer's report is fairly light from the perspective of there's not a lot of upcoming cons, action considerations, because we're still in the preparation for the budget, so. Um, what you'll notice in the financial reports this month, um, while it's the August board meeting, it's the first month of the new financials. Um, because they were, the treasurer's report is including the financial statements from the prior month. So July's financial statements are um, being approved in the treasurer's report this month, the um, treasurer's report, cash flow, investment reports, statement position, revenue expenditures. So that revenue and expenditure report that you're seeing in here has the tentative budget that the board approved in July, in those columns for budget. Next month, when the board approves the Septem, the final budget, those numbers will be updated with any differences between things that have happened that we need to adjust, you know, new information that we got in the last month. Um, so we'll update those figures towards the end of this month, next month you'll see those um, with the September, but the financial reports. Um, the other piece of information here is just a reminder that the budget will be approved next month. Um, these, um, the process is build those expenditures, list all the revenue that we have, and then use the um, property tax levy, it, the, it's meant to um, fill the, the hole, right, like, you, you, we list all the expenditures, we've built what the needs are of the district, and we offset that with all the other local revenue, state and federal revenue, and then um, recommend a new tax levy to make up the difference.
When do we get the numbers from the, uh, is it the, the county clerk that, that decides on what we actually, the rate?
The rates don't, so.
Is that right?
Yeah, property tax process, right, so the property tax process is, um, right now, as part of the budget, we're estimating what the next um, property tax levy will be, the twenty-two property tax levy, or the twenty-three tax levy. And then the, the estimate will be tentatively approved by you guys in November, final approved in December. And then the, then that levy gets filed, I have to go file that by the third, I don't remember, the third Tuesday or, I don't, some, I don't remember the exact date, but in December, it has to be filed. By, with the county clerk. Um, then the clerk does what it needs to do, passes it off to the tax extension people. The rates don't come to us until February, usually. Yeah, and then they send that to me, if we make any adjustments under PTAL, because what'll happen is, our levy will be submitted, and then the, um, in the tax extension process, it, the rates, uh, were limited, right, so that levy gets dropped usually, based on those limits. And what we have the ability to do is reallocate which, where, which operating levy gets limited. Um, typically, it's just allocated across the operating levy, though. Um, so anyway, those rates come in February, I have to approve them, that they match what we want them to do, and then um, tax bills go out in the spring, so that our first collections are in the end of May. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Kind of reviewing that process?
Yeah, and then the taxes we paid in May, right? Then does the school get those?
So we get them on, so we get a, there's a, Will County is actually very good at turning that tax money around, okay? So if you pay your taxes in May, we do get a, um, so if you put, you're, you get your tax bill, you pay it right away, we get a payment in the end of May for those early payments. So usually, that's mostly mortgage companies, right, like?
Right, right.
They're the ones that pay right away. But the due date's Ju, June, so then we get two other payments in June, and then we get one a month through December.
Through December, okay.
Well, one a month till September, and then we get a couple, and then.
So the papers.
Yeah.
But there's a regular schedule, so as they collect it, they turn it out to us.
And we have, they have to sustain all our bills until next May?
Right, so our final collections, the, the bulk of the collections will be September. And then we'll get kind of the trickling late payments for October, November, December. Um, so basically from like September to the end of May, what we've collected in the spring and what we've collected in this fall has to pay those months. Correct. Any other questions on it, yeah?
I don't know if this would be inappropriate time to ask this, or if you want to explain it, but a lot of people have been talking about their quadrennial assessment that they just received. Um, could you kind of explain what that is for the people that don't know?
And, and, and hold that thought, because if you don't mind, Stephanie, if I jump in, you know, kind of working backwards, so uh, what Dr. Shaw is referring to, you know, if you looked on social media, many people, counties all over, um, received in the past couple weeks, you know, after four years, township assessors, you know, county assessors said, here is the value of your house. But I think important back to what Ms. Johnson said, is as you recall, last year, through the budget and through the levy, ultimately, the rate, and I think it's so important to pay attention to the rate, because the rate i- is actually the thing that's going to generate a payment you will make. In our tax rate, and I believe this will be the case with this, what, what we're proposing this year, the tax rate will actually go down. We can govern that. We as a board can make decisions that bring the tax rate down, what we can't govern is the value of your property. Someone else decides whether your property is valuable, is that assessment, it goes up, or it doesn't go up. I can only speak for my family, um, I understand when my assessment goes up, that that will mean that across the board, I'll be paying more taxes, but I also know that the value of my home just went up, which is, for me, you know, something I always wanted to be going, you know, in the upward direction. The only time in my adult life that the value of my home dropped was in the Great Recession. And had I been in a situation, let's say I lost my, my employment, and I couldn't make my mortgage payments, I would have had a home worth, because of when I bought my home, a home worth less than the mortgage I owe, so it's, so, you know, it's something to think about when those, you know, we can govern the rate, we can lower the rate, um, we don't govern the assessment of that property.
You're taking my thunder right now, Dr. Shaw.
Oh dang, I'm sorry. Um, so I'm gonna stop there, but I just want to share with the board, because I think it's important to think of. You know, sometimes the levy is what um, seems the most glamorous part of this process. I would actually have your eyes on the budget. Um, we are asking you to look at a draft that is an increase in our budget, but the increase in our budget is not the tax rate. And we're capped, we can only by law increase our budget, and when you look at the budget, you are really setting the levy. Because if you approve that budget, then you're saying, we need to levy taxes to fund that budget, much, much like Mrs. Johnson um, was asking. Unlike other taxing bodies, the public school, we, we, we have a limit, five percent limit, that's as high as we can go in an inflationary period, even though our costs are higher than that. And so the current budget right now does a few things, it, it maintains your goal of six to twelve months on. It um, avoids deficit spending, so you're not in a deficit next year. It avoids uh, short-term debt, and it avoids cutting programs. And my guess would be when we get those rates, it'll, it'll lower the tax rate, at least from what we ask. Quadrennial assessment, that was a lot of, a lot of me talking, and your question.
Couple things, the, the process, so the way that the assessment comes into play in our process, right, so I talked about our levy process, and how that turns into a rate. So the assessment is done, being done by the county assessors offices, um, and township assessors offices, um, along, kind of alongside of the levy process, right? And then what happens when we file our levy is, they finalize all their assessments, and quadrannally they update them. And then that assessment combined with the levy is what turns into our rate. So the piece of the rate that we really have full control over is that levy, right, like, which drives the rate, of course. Um, but your, the tax rate is composed of our levy, which is a numerator, and the assessment, a total assessed value is the denominator, right? Um, it's, it's just a, it's a, just a math, you know, um, equation. So if we're asking for more, but the assessed values for all of the properties across our district are going up more than what we're asking for, so if your property value assessment went up eight, nine percent, which I think many of them did, go up between seven and nine, but we're limited to a five percent increase, that's how the rate goes down. So in that one year Dr. McBride was talking about, that is the last time that the district's rate went up, because we were still asking for one percent, two percent, what we were capped at, but the property values went down instead of up. And so that formula then comes out with a, a rate increase to cover the, the ask or the needs of the taxing bodies. Does that make sense? Um, so, and the tax rate, of course, that we're talking about is our operating tax rate. So that is what we need to fund operations, it is not a capital tax rate, which is a total different piece of, piece of the pie, a total different animal, and that is tied to when you issue debt, when you're doing referendums, when you're doing things like that, that's a whole separate piece. Right now, we're talking about the operating tax rate to fund this budget. Does that make sense? Any questions, any more questions about that? For our super board members, there are tax videos, if you have any interest at all.
Fascinating.
Mr. Slager did a wonderful job of editing all of my nonsense, and um, there, there's some more information, if you want to understand a little more about what we're talking about. I'm sure this is probably the first time you're hearing me ramble about property taxes, so.
And, and these are, you know,
They're on our website.
Ms. Del Ponte and Ms. Jose, and really any board members, you know, just seeing Stephanie talk about taxation and, and how a budget works, very, very helpful. She does a great job of making it clear, making it plain, um, you know, lay people's terms, it can be very, very complicated. And one thing I always, you know, say to board members, this type of stuff, it, it's, it's a lot of spreadsheets, it's, it's a lot of numbers, and it's, it's best dealt with, you know, certainly if any board member wants to sit side by side, Stephanie and I really dig in, um, you will watch our, our full nerdiness come out, because we both have an affinity for, for looking at these numbers and being very precise. We would love that opportunity, if, if that's something that you're interested in doing.
There's also a two-hour session at IASB, um, if you guys want to attend that.
I would like to see those videos, though.
They're on our website. Yep, they're.
They're, they're on our YouTube channel.
It's right on our business office website.
I had a question, I know you answered it already, but I had the question on the bills payable regarding, it's first, first start?
First student?
First student, first student, yeah, first student, you rent the bus, and, and the reason it really caught me off guard was because I know this bill came in, you know, in, uh, in August, you're, you're paying it in August, but it was also like for services in July or June, and thinking, wait a minute, do we have bus service in July?
Because we have special education students that attend programs all summer, um, for their, um, so that there's no learning loss for them, right? Like, so that they can continue their, their progress.
Okay.
So, yes, first student is our um, out service, there are, um, we bus most of our students in-house, right? But there are certain populations of our students that we use first student for. For our, when they are placed at a, a, an out, another educational facility, because that's the, um, the, what the needs of the student um, require. Um, first student drives those students, first student also, I think, might drive a couple of routes here, right, Angela?
Uh, our first student, all of our students that are in um, special programs that need special transportation, so yes, we get about um, eight routes that are coming here.
That are coming here, yeah, so if they have special transportation needs, that's who, first student does that for us. So, and that particular bill, we're paying um, sixty thousand dollars, it's actually a, a smaller bill, because not all of the students, um, continue in the summer. Um, a regular bill throughout the rest of the year is a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with first student.
I think at one point in time, we did talk about, and this was years ago, we talked about having us take over the busing for that, you know, just considering the amount that they were paying a hundred and fifty per month for the specialized, but um, you know, I know that some of these, well, now it's like shortage of bus drivers and stuff, and I can remember, vaguely remember saying that some of these buses do require, there's certain, you know, mechanisms to them because of the special needs.
Yeah, and, and many of these students are transported one or two at a time, right, so they use smaller vehicles.
It's door-to-door transportation.
Door-to-door.
Yeah, door-to-door specialized equipment.
Right.
Um, and so we don't have a lot of that equipment, so.
Yeah, we would have had to purchase all that, break the same, yeah.
We have taken more routes back from our special transportation, where we can. Some of our CCC routes are run by district transportation.
Any other questions on the treasurer's report, or any of the expenditures that the board will be approving tonight?
Do I have a motion to approve the July twenty twenty-three treasurer's report? So, it's been motioned by Dr.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Thank you, Ms. Cord, for that.
Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bozma?
Yes.
Novera?
Yes.
Johnsons?
Yeah.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caneo?
Yes. Superintendent reports.
All right, a number of different things tonight. I'm gonna ad lib a few things. One, just, you know, I'd echo what Mrs. Kishline said, you know, thanks, and all that thanks is represented in this room. We have building administrators who did so much to prepare department chairs, welcome back days, freshman orientation, including great videos of people out in front and, and, and creating a genuine and a real welcome for our families coming in at Central and coming in at East Campus. We had Tony Candari and his staff, we had a large group of, of new staff come on board, an outstanding teacher induction. And then, I, I am just amazed, it happens so many times in schools, but I start to get panicky when I'm walking around and there's things torn up, and desks out, and things hanging out, and people climbing on the roof, and it seems like there is no possible way that floors will be polished. And teachers, they, our, our teachers, I, you know, nightmares that our teachers will come in and there's no desks in their room. And then, like, in a blink of an eye, like, there's some kind of maintenance custodial pixie dust, it's all put back together. And, you know, those are real human beings, those are real people taking a pride in the place and making sure that we are, we are set up. I think it's been a strong start. I don't want to steal the thunder of our principals, they'll report on that as well. I think returning to two institute days has been greeted well. I think the rhythm of the two days spoke to the needs that our staff have to get ready for students, and having our later arrival Wednesday worked out. I was pleased with our keynote speaker, Tony Frontier, who'll be working with us over the course of the year and, and working with small teams. You heard a little earlier, obviously, we always start with safety and security in mind. Probably the newest safety and security innovation that we have is having students, and we're working out the kinks, like when the student, government individuals talked about, students are scanning in when they come in now. So we know immediately who is here, who is in the building from the word go. Also, we've created a situation with Infinite Campus where parents can go online to report an absence, so that our phones are really a little bit more free for those serious situations where you have a lot of questions for the attendance office, there's a real emergency. So that's all about knowing who is here, where students are. So I, I appreciate that. Heat, the heat is coming, yeah, Mrs. Johnson.
I understand the scanning in to know who's in the building. But when we have a lot of visitors, because, you know, this is a busy building, how do you know?
They have to come in, well, two things, that's a really excellent question I forgot to mention. One, they still have to go in the security offices and check in. And two, I think the scanning is so that we have staff looking face-to-face at people coming in, scanning their ID, because I think the start of school, especially is one of the most vulnerable times. Someone who looks like a teenager could just mix right in, come right, come right out in. Now we have a process of literally greeting people at the door. Do you belong here? You just didn't put a red lantern on and look like a student, so.
Can I ask about the attendance? Are there safeguards in place to make sure that the parents are the ones submitting?
Well, they are the ones that have the login privileges. So unless, you know, they somehow fall into, then that could not possibly, it could be the situation. I know you're thinking like a dean, right? You know? So that's a question, you know, I would have to.
What was that question?
So I think what Dr. Shaw is asking, what if there's a, you know, you know, some kind of bad actor who wants to inappropriately excuse someone? And obviously, we can all pose as somebody else online. So somehow I get privileges to Infinite Campus, I can go into Infinite Campus, I excuse Chelsea, but I'm not really Chelsea's parents. I'm somebody else, I'm Chelsea's friend. There was just recently a case, I can't remember at what school, where a, in a situation like that, a twenty-two-year-old individual called his seventh-grade girlfriend out posing as a parent. And then that whole thing is caught, so you all see the problems there, and I think that's what Dr. Shaw is getting at. So don't have a full answer, I don't know if Mr. Dusterhoff.
Does spit back an email directly back to the parent. So the parent would see, what do you mean? He's absent, I don't know anything about this. So it's like a verification, once it's processed on the other half.
And you would hope a parent would see that in time, right, Mr. Bartley, if they had a question, right? They would say, wait a minute, I didn't, you know, call my student out. It actually helps, because, not to say that this happens all the time, but you could get a call that isn't from, an actual phone call, that isn't from a parent. As well. As well, our, just well, good of a job our attendance secretaries do. From time to time, there might be one that slips by, so it actually helps with that. Made famous in Ferris Bueller's Day Off.
Although there is also concerns now with the advent of like AI-generated voices and like, all of that, that anybody.
And they deserve the day off. That's, that's, so, and, and I guess, you know, the question, the question's a really good question, because you would never want someone released from school to, to a bad actor, right? You know, that's a, that's a very good point. Heat, the heat is coming, it, it feels quite comfortable outside right now, but all indications are it's coming. To just shorten that up, we are, we have, we are following to a T everything that the IHSA requires for athletics, in terms of monitoring, hydrating, testing, seeing what the heat is. We, right now, are, are not planning on any interruption to school operations, although we have asked our staff to review online learning, e-learning, what are our processes and procedures for e-learning. We know we have a long year ahead of us, we can only do five e-learning emergency days. So we do want to conserve those in case we other have other weather events. We believe that our buses, that's the primary concern, because those buses in the afternoon can get very, very hot. But we believe we can take precautions to keep students safe on those buses, and we believe with air conditioning in classrooms, and then full climate control at East, that we can get through what will be probably a rough twenty-four hour period. The one change that we are going to make is at Central on Wednesday night, we're going to have a virtual recorded videos. And I appreciate Mrs. Kishline's partnership on this. Virtual open house rather than in-person. We, we just feel, two reasons, one, bringing our parents and our teachers into a situation which is going to be hot in the evening, right at the point when, when that heat is supposed to be rising the most, is just not a good experience or a healthy experience for, or a pleasant experience for, for anyone. And then also, if we can exit the building, we can do other things to cool the building down. So it's ready the next day, which is Thursday, it's supposed to be the hottest day of the week. Without human activity in the building the night before, there's quite a bit we can do to make, you know, take advantage of the heat. So those are, and we're just, you know, on point for what's coming. Speaking of Central, most of my report that I wrote up for you is, is related to Central. It's been a very busy time. On August eighth, our DLA architects unveiled to us what they believe they can do from a floor planning point of view. I've asked these board members, and a few of you I have to just check in with tonight. I met with Mr. Travis, he could speak too. He's a better judge whether today, going over those architectural plans and floor plans was, was useful, I think it was.
I thought it was very useful. Visually having something and going through each stage, step by step, it, it helps a lot to, to try to understand. And then breaking down the finance part of it really helped too, so I thought that was excellent.
And, and what I shared with Mr. Travis is, we, we for sure as board members and student board members, you've been in this conversation too, we are at a point where, you know, I, I asked Mr. Travis, are, are you committed to the idea of renovating Central? That's something everyone at this table has to ask herself or himself, because really from this meeting on, we will expend more money and more time on that proposition. Between now and really October sixteen is the time to pump the brakes, you know, as, as board members on, on that issue. Reason why I'd like to meet with you each individually, is what it really allows me to do, and I shared with Mr. Travis, is the same process that we've gone through, where we looked at it once, and then questions bubble up. Then you look at it, Finance and Facility Committee will look at it next week. Curriculum Committee will look at it again on September twelve. You can have communication with me, then we'll look at it as a whole board on September eighteen. I just find it's the kind of thing that, that you can't just encounter one time. Presently, what we have from DLA is we have a couple thresholds. They have floor plans, which I think we were all very pleased with. What they're trying to do is, right now, we're at sixty-seven percent of use of that building. You'll never have a hundred percent used, but increasing that, and doing a number of different things. One, addressing all the major mechanical and Americans with disability work. That really answers the question, if we want that building to continue as a school building, that, that has to be addressed. Two, creating some new innovative spaces that also have security in mind. And then three, doing some more generalized renovation that would allow us to have a proper space for the CCC, the Lockport Academy, make use of some of the spaces like our locker rooms and other areas that we're not using at all. Add some spaces, like a multipurpose room, a much larger fitness room, which would modernize what we do in physical education as well. Move the port, very exciting. What you'll have to decide as board members is, one, your commitment to renovating the building. Do you feel that should be a school building? I, I have had a difficult time finding folks who aren't behind that idea. And I'm sure there are some folks. So one, two, to what extent? Major mechanical would cost the board about thirty-one to thirty-five million dollars. You could go as high as seventy-five to eighty million dollars. And you would finance that through municipal bonds. The Citizens Committee that we worked with over the past year, their advice to you, and they'll be at the Finance and Facility Committee meeting, a number of their members, is that, that you should put that in front of voters. If you really firmly believe in a freshman center that is important to all seven of our feeder districts, that's where their freshmen will come, that the community should at least have a choice on, on how, how, how much that building is renovated. To what degree is it modernized as a modern high school facility that can kind of stand with East Campus, right? So we talked about thresholds of, of, of how much it would cost to do a renovation. But the most important thing, I think, to remember for our, for you and for our taxpayers is renovation would be much less costly than a brand-new building. And a brand-new building would have to involve some, some process to deal with Central, because you still would have that building. You still would have to handle the cost of owning that building. Questions, just, you know, things that you have in your mind. I tried to summarize it here as well, what the priorities are. Yeah, Ms. Jose.
About the scanning in, um, once you enter in, is there any plans to opening new sites for checking in? Or possibly opening earlier for people, especially in the Feral Lot, who come in at seven forty, twenty-five and don't even enter in at seven, like, until seven-thirty? And especially now, we're talking about the heat and fluctuating climate, highlighting all those things. And we live in Illinois.
Do you mean it's gonna be cold in winter?
Yes.
We can certainly discuss when we, we open up, I think that's the easier variable, right? We, we are caught a little bit when our staff comes on, you know, our staff has a time that they have to work from work to work. And one of the most important things, in terms of more, you know, places that students can enter, really comes down to human beings. Want a human being scanning you in, greeting you, eyes on as a safety measure. So those are two things we would have to think through right now. When our staff comes on and they can be at doors, and then we want to make sure that we don't open up doors where individuals are coming in and there aren't human beings looking eye to eye at people coming in. You know, we can't have like a self-service, because it would defeat the purpose of it, right? So it's really a staffing issue right now.
How many check-ins are there?
Uh, there's, yeah, two, really on Feral Road, but there's two doors, and then there's one main cafeteria.
Three entrances and altogether, one, two, three, six, six to seven scanners.
Right.
And is this taken place at both campuses?
It is. More at door fifteen at Central, that, that's the main entrance in the morning. And, door thirteen?
Three.
Three, thanks. Any questions about Central? I, you know, I, I would really, really stress to the board, now, now is, is the time. This is, you know, we've been talking about this now for a year, and now is sort of the, is the time that a decision really has to be made. To, to move this forward, the board really needs to make a decision by October sixteenth of what, what it would like to see. And that's for many reasons. One, to, you know, inform taxpayers, to, you know, prepare DLA, to be precise in terms of when you, would you go to the taxpayers, would you not go to the taxpayers? What's your financial strategy? And I think the question really for the entire community is, do we want Central Campus to continue on as a school building? And if the answer is yes, then we probably have a responsibility to do the proper things to make that a school building for all, and a modern school building, as well for the next generation of voters, so.
So if our answer is no, what's the other option?
Well, that gets, if, if the answer is no, then you, you have some more difficult choices. You could, as a board, continue to put about a half million to a million dollars a year into just fixing things, but I would say you then run the risk of catastrophic failure. You, and it's not a joke, those systems, if they fail, you won't have occupancy. If you don't have occupancy, then someone down the line would have about a thousand students that have to go sometimes. You probably would force a return of split schedules at this building until you could regain that occupancy. So that's the plus minus, that you could continue as we're continuing right now.
It seems like each year, costs is going up, so we gotta keep that in mind.
Yes.
Right, and, you know, let, let me give you an example. In two thousand eleven, when the district proposed its last referendum for a brand-new building, the cost of that building was eighty-five million dollars, which would be probably somewhere in the neighborhood of renovating Central. Cost of a brand-new school building, which would be another option, to say, well, we build a brand-new freshman center. Or we would build a brand-new nine-through-twelve school, that's another option. That has two implications. One, the cost on that would probably be somewhere a hundred and sixty to two-hundred million dollars. It would be the, the heaviest tax burden you could put on the community. It's hard to justify that without a, a large population in these. You could make the argument that we want two ice holes of two thousand. You still, as a board, then would have to decide, let's say you went with that strategy of building a new building, you still would have to decide, what do you do at Central? Because you still have financial obligations of keeping that building a building. You know, even at minimum, even if you mothball, then you still have obligations to that building.
Because it's a historic site?
It, I would probably say that your only option is if you choose, your only reasonable option is if you choose not, not to renovate Central. If you choose, if you went down the route of a newer building, it would be demolition. Because realistically, developer's not gonna come in and assume a thirty-five million dollar cost in electricity in each VAC, that wouldn't be profitable. If you said, let's go into a partnership and open up like a community center, somebody still has to pay, you know, to continue that building as is. And we're probably at a point, the district's general standard has been, we're not gonna do major renovations, and that's been going on now for about twenty years with, with Central, and like Mr. Travis said, that's just gonna get more expensive, right? So there, there are different pathways, you know, for sure, right? And then if, if there is a renovation project at Central, how extensive is it, right? That's something that you would really have to think about.
I thought we, I thought we could dem, like demolish Central simply because of its historic value. Isn't it a protected site at this point?
It is not, it is not. And, and the initial on that is that the only part of Central that might qualify for National Historic Register would be the gym. That's, that's a thumbnail, that's just talk. That's not anything that somebody's really done. That's not anything that somebody's really done some research on.
And I can attest to that because I think former board member, Richard Ives, and I, we were at a referendum. We were on the referendum committee called Building Bridges, you know, two oh five at that point in time. And and yes, that was the big, I think that's why our referendum failed. Because even if we had to build that new high school, the people always asked, well, what are you gonna do with Central? You know, what's, and that was the big question, you know, what are you gonna do? Because even if you said we converted it into a community center, we would still have to be the upkeep, the configuration to try to do that. And then trying to sell it, it's who's gonna buy it with all these major problems attached to it, you know, as far as that. And so that that was really, I would say, draw that for us. And and thinking back then, we should have done it. We should have renovated, you know, Lockport Central, but who's who used to know on that part of it? You know, if we could turn back the clock. Yes, you know, and 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 yes, and just in talking just this whole summer, you know, with different organizations, different people, you know, in the grocery store and everything, just having that whole conversation of Lockport Central. And I know having those tours and everything during Canal Days, it got a lot of conversations going with a lot of people. And I I just want to truthfully say that it's all been positive. Because everyone has says, yes, let's let's keep our building, let's keep it as a freshman center. We don't want to demolish it, you know, and we know that's upkeep for that. And and even some of the parents that went, you know, I guess through fresh, not fresh start, but I think at the very beginning of school.
Or freshman orientation.
And stuff like that, they even made the comment, oh, boy, this is really warm in here. So, I can just imagine how it must be warm if we allowed to go to bed at night on that Wednesday or Thursday.
Right, you'll see, if you want to come over, you'll see in full tentacle the circular problem at Central, right? There will be air conditioners blasting wall units full force in the rooms with door closed. But what that does is that creates condensation where literally we have a slip hazard in the hallways. Because you'll see that that condensation will settle in in the hallways. Moisture is the enemy of any vintage building in northern Illinois, especially a masonry building. So, that's that circular problem, not getting into the wiring, which Mr. Borsman knows, we still have cloth wiring in that building. The roofing, the windows are a key component to it as well, right? And then real HVAC, which can be done. To your point, you know, we could look back and say, gosh, we should have done that. But here's the good news, although the costs continue to go up, the technology has significantly improved in the past decade on renovating vintage buildings. You see it in some of the places that we've visited. Yeah, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson.
Speaking of renovating, uh, I don't remember the name, but what, did we engage some company that was gonna look at? There was a renovation kind of company that came.
We were looking at a performance contractor.
Okay, so what happened to that?
At MRSKO. When, you know, certainly Mr. Thompson can speak to this. Performance contractors primarily focus on renovation to improve energy. And MRSKO is an outstanding company. I know many of you had a good interaction, I've had a good interaction with them. But when Mr. Thompson and I did research to look at large-scale projects like this, when you might choose a performance contractor versus an architect, we couldn't find any large-scale project like this that was a performance contractor. An architect, neither a construction manager, owner agent, at-risk agent, design, build were the methods. And we just felt that that all the research districts that we talked to, superintendents, you know, facility directors, that there were meant, there were more reasons to stay with sort of DLA than to take out a new company, despite how strongly we felt about that company.
I do have to ask her, student board members, does it feel like there's a huge difference between East and Central in terms of like resources and just quality of education?
Absolutely, it's much more modern. We have a lot of access to devices that maybe the students at Central won't. And their conditioning is a big plus over here. I feel like overall, it's a lot more modern. And we have more spaces for students to connect, especially in the hallways or before school or even after school. And that adds.
Chelsea, do you have anything?
I mean, I agree with everything that Tori said, that it is more modern. And I think central renovation has been talked about even with the student body. And I think a lot of students will be behind this and would love to see Central renovated. But yes, I'm personally for it, so I would love to see it.
All right, well, thank you.
That's that's my report.
All right, thank you.
All right, now we move on to our information reports on the curriculum report. Dr. Christopher and Dr. Clontis.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, I'm just gonna summarize what most of is already in there about Board Policy six colon three hundred, which is about graduation requirements. Really, the biggest change is saying that students don't have to have biology to graduate. Our practice would still be, they have to have two science credits. They in align with the twenty twenty-four state requirements, they would have to be lab science. But we only teach biology at Central campus. And so, when we have a student transfer into the school or a student doesn't pass, that creates a barrier. And we have to come up with situations where the student doesn't necessarily get the lab experience. Also, we put specifically in there where parents, community members could find the most updated policies. And that's gonna be online. You know, we, you approve School Links, we've talked about School Links, and that will be the easiest accessible place for everyone to find what are the most current state policies, obviously will be rolled in there. And then we highlighted the board's continued commitment to the forty community service hours because those weren't there. So, that is what is in six colon three hundred.
Question?
All right. Then I'm gonna talk a little bit about equal opportunity schools and what we've been doing. So, the board, you approved in twenty twenty-three our partnership with equal opportunity schools. And I was on a small committee panel that gave you an update along with Mr. Josh Oster, who is one of our AP coordinators. And Tracy Conrad from Equal Opportunity Schools was here to share with you. And so, really, we've done engaging in a lot of planning and talking. Dr. McBride did a presentation kinda at the end of the school year last year. Our leadership team has had an introductory workshop in late July that we did. That was about two and a half hours online with some EOS partners. We met just last week with LaShawn Singleton, who was our partnership director, and so we're excited about that. We're doing a lot of planning around logistics. Dr. Greenan, along with Josh Oster, they have convened a committee of staff members who will be working on our work. And they also did a sharing session at Institute Day. So, lots of connections with EOS, lots of planning going on. All of this is in an effort to really start talking about those, that key student survey that we wanna do, where we get that great information about who are the trusted adults that students have, mindsets that students have that would predispose them to be, find a lot of success in our AP classrooms and dual-credit classrooms, which would go to help meet our Board Goal One.
Back on that, we had a suggestion by Ms. Johnson to do our fall board workshop only focused on equal opportunity schools so that board members really understand what what is this process, what does it do? What would a year be like with equal opportunity schools? I think Anne and I talked about it and 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 support that. We did, we have put out there the date, September second, for everybody at this table. What I imagine is that that might be a short breakfast, like about an eight to ten thirty or nine to eleven. I think probably properly, a number of us in this room could could have a breakfast in a brief with board members. Where you become a decisive element, not only knowing what's happening with EOS, is when we come to you with with staffing and planning. There are some direct resources, the board can be very instrumental in in making that decision. Because we can't simply put our our teachers in a position where we say, hey, let's take some, we're gonna increase the number of first-year advanced placement and dual-credit test, uh, class takers. We can't put those brand-new students to that place without providing them some resources and support. And that's where the board directly is a decision maker. You know, you may make that happen. We'd probably be asking Ms. Osay and Ms. Del Ponte, but, you know, what do you believe are the conditions where, you know, students will thrive? What do we need to put in place for them to thrive? We can, we can commit or not commit to September second offline, get your calendars out, but I wanted to add that. Because your work with, as board members, is important too.
It's gonna be here.
Yeah, I would, it would be here unless we wanted to go offsite at, you know, someplace, we could sort of do that as well. Sorry to break your flow, Dr. Christopher.
So. And I apologize for not reading it, I got behind in my work. When are we looking at the survey being done?
Uh, October.
And this is phase one, right?
This is phase one.
And a workshop would really break down, you know, why is the survey in October? Equally important, EOS would say is equally important is the survey that our teachers take. Very, very important. And there's walking you through the specific reasons why, why October? And then what happens next? Then what happens after that? You know, I'm making it sound overly complex, but but it is complicated.
I know we're gonna talk about this at the retreat and probably in Curriculum Committee, but does the scores that come out, that usually come out in October, do they play a part in this?
The the advanced placement scores or or SAT?
The SAT score.
SAT can, but now you're getting into my opinion. And the advanced placement has what they call AP Predictor. I I don't agree with that. I agree with what classroom teachers across the nation will tell you is that work ethic, motivation, drive is advanced placement dual credit. There's over and over again when surveyed, classroom teachers say, that that's, that's what I'm looking for. Far above even GPA or or test scores, but they can be a driver.
But can't SAT show you? You know, I could have a student that's not necessarily performing to their, you know, high standard, you know. But SAT may, I know it's a one-day test.
They they can, and we will, in the in the survey, when this insight, pardon me, Mrs. Lopez Kiva, when this insight card is generated on each student, integrated into this will be the student's GPA and known test scores.
Okay.
So, a student will be identified with sort of advanced placement dual credit promise, and that'll be a data point as well.
Okay.
Lots of data points on this.
And there's a major shift in SAT this year.
There is a major shift.
He's ready for, so. Sorry, sorry, got a little twitch. Speaking of my language.
I'm not with Lockport today, so.
Yes, great question.
Did you say there's a major shift?
They're they're going to a digital format.
Right.
It's gonna be a digital format, so it's just a matter of getting everybody.
On board.
On board, online, that's all. Charge my time, yeah.
Yep.
Is that safe? Is that not gonna, like?
It's just different, you know, change is hard. So, it's just a matter of making sure that students, because a lot of students will test prep and they'll, you know, get their books out and they'll be test prepping and used to doing it, pencil, paper. And now we're shifting over to the online version, so, you know, we'll just have to get them ready.
Why don't they just look up?
Pardon? No, no.
Why don't they just look up?
No, no, it's secure.
They lock the browser.
Yeah, it's secure, yeah.
And we're 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 preparing our students to, I feel like I'm totally getting us off track, but we're giving the NMSQT PSAT test to all sophomores and juniors in electronic format. Because that's, you know, having that experience will make them better when they have to take that test in April. Right, ladies, would you agree with that?
I was gonna say.
It's like a prayer, it's like a prayer.
More nerve-wracking for us than the students. Because they're gonna be like, yeah, whatever.
Sorry for taking off track.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm just gonna quickly talk about Institute Day. I know several of the board members were here and did participate in some of the sessions. On day one, we had a wonderful opportunity where staff could go and pick their own kind of professional development options. Dr. McBride did some training on AI, hot topic for sure. We had grading, we had instructional practices. You know, the those, the sports and the clubs were really excited to talk to their teachers and make sure that they had all the information that we needed or they needed in order to start the school year well. And we finalized that day with our guest speaker, which was Dr. Tony Fruntier, who really helped, talked about clarity and helping our our staff kind of focus their energies on on the important things in life. And you always have to have a good day where you end with a entire staff karaoke session of Lean Down Me. And believe me, Dr. Christopher and I, we're front and center, belting it out, we had a great time. And then on day two, we, teachers had the opportunity to be together in PLC groups, meet in their building sessions, their departments, and then they had opportunities to work and get ready for that first day of school. And so, that was pretty much it, you know. Our paraprofessionals did a day-long training. We had Turning Point Autism Academy come out. And we did a really deep dive into supporting students on the spectrum, especially with some behaviors and and sensory integration, things along those lines. We're really focused on getting the information that they wanted to them. So, they did spend the whole day over at Central Campus. It was it was cooler then, so I didn't get any complaints about that. And then it paid different lunch, so there you go. A good time was had by y'all and lots of learning occurred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have our principal reports.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And just to also share a little bit more, one of the sessions that we did on Institute Day was about Central Campus and updating our staff. Thank you to Dr. McBride, to the board, for really allowing the staff to hear, have input. I know the Central staff was very pleased with last year, several times they were called to the table and communicated with, asked, you know, for their opinion. And then also our students, actually Chelsea and Tori both were there, in allowing to talk about what Central could be and what we want it to be to help successfully educate our students, you know, for years to come. So, that was fantastic that we were able to do and share the update with the staff so they kind of are in the know of where we're at, what we're doing, and, you know, the decisions that need to be made. And then kudos to Bill Thompson and his guys. With the heat upon us, you know, both of his guys over at Central, Anthony and and Dave, and then also my new assistant principal, Jason Osbell, did a phenomenal job and had the foresight last week, kind of came up with a game plan. And actually, they were all in over the weekend, kind of doing different things to help mitigate, you know, the heat. So, that didn't turn into, that west and south side of the building didn't turn into a greenhouse effect. They were putting down the shades, they were running the chillers to cycle them through. And then they actually were opening some of the windows in the gym to kind of ventilate things. So, they have been phenomenal in thinking ahead in what is to come. But yes, we will be going online, we'll be getting more instructions out to the families tomorrow. And actually, it will be a great opportunity because now the kids are gonna have to sit down with their parents and show them their Google classrooms. And then that will be a huge, huge factor for the parents and a huge thing for them to see. And then go through some of the videos, and our teachers overwhelmingly are always available to answer any questions, as always. So, that's been kind of what's been transpiring, but really excited to kick off the school year at Central on our orientation days, the first and second. We actually had over eight hundred families come through in those two days. It didn't seem like it because John Cane does a phenomenal job of making sure that there's plenty of time. But we are, for a freshman classroom, probably about nine fifteen right now every day. A couple get added, but then we have a couple who finally tell us that, you know, they're going to go elsewhere. So, we're about nine fifteen for the freshman class, and they have been a great group. So, we're looking forward to, you know, a great start to the school year.
I feel like when the calendar turns to August, like the summer's over. You know, as you can see.
July fourth, that's over.
Yeah. You know, we summarize with the freshman orientation and welcome back days that you can see from our report. You know, August hit and Kerry had freshman orientation at Central Campus. And then later that week, we had welcome back days here at East. The following week, we had our first meeting with department chairs to kick off the new school year. And then we had our new staff come in for a three-day orientation. And then the week after that was last week. We had two Institute Days and our first day of school, so. The summer is great, obviously, to rest and get rejuvenated, but there's there's nothing like the. to rest and get rejuvenated, but there's, there's nothing like the energy for the beginning of the school year, and we're really excited for the beginning of the school year, as Kerry said. It was great to get in front of people, our families at freshman orientation and welcome back days, and then of course welcoming our students back to school. Kerry and I both did welcome back videos, and then I was very happy this past Friday, we had a great event for our seniors in particular. The last couple of years, we did a senior sunrise at the end of the year for seniors. And we're going to do it a little bit differently this year as we kicked off the year with a senior sunrise. We had about 440 seniors show up. That was great to see, about 5:50 in the morning already, so many kids on the, at the football field. Then we're going to do a senior sunset at the end of the year with some activities that our senior cosponsors Julie DeCary and April Kime have planned. So that was great to kick off the year for our seniors, and then at East Campus, myself, Matt Bartley, and Jen Webberay, our two assistant principals, had the chance to speak to students this past Friday, to talk about our expectations at East, character education, opportunities and ways to get involved. So it was a great way to kick off the year, and like we said, we're really excited for the school year.
Any questions you guys have of us?
Do we have like a Plan B slash C of one of the rooms, the admin work at all in the room?
We have different spaces and we get all these, we have one or two classrooms open just about every period, so if we need to move kids to a different class, then we'll make accommodations.
Extra nurses on board just in case?
Well, we have our two nurses, and Jason and I can also accommodate anyone, come need be, but our two nurses are phenomenal.
Same as you, we'll be ready.
Okay.
And on behalf of Kerry and myself, we want to congratulate Tori and Chelsea, as well as McKenna and Akash for our student board representatives, as well as community representatives. They are going to be a wonderful representation of our student body.
Both members of the student leadership team when they came through Central Campus, so very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, moving on, we have the two overnight field trips.
And I'm sneaking a third in, you know, we, our practice is to inform the board that, you know, not necessarily approve these. So this is just January 11th through 13th, State Theater Festival. We typically send roughly about 25 students. August 18th and 19th, sometimes these things pass us by when we inform you. This varsity girls tennis team went out to Jacobs pretty, pretty far out, stayed overnight, and then we have one for August 25th and 26th. This is Skills USA. You just congratulate a student who is at the national level, well, now we're all the way back to the local level.
Is this a young lady when we met before that was talking about?
We've met a couple of young ladies in Skills USA.
That we saw the, saw something, I think in the paper, but you say it hadn't came to you yet or something.
Hey, no, it's not ringing a bell, I apologize, Ms. Johnson, but this is officer training for our students who have, are going to be officers in Skills USA, so they'll be overnight in Algonquin, Illinois.
And you have the maintenance report there?
You do. You, if you want to see how our maintenance and Mr. Thompson get it done, you can see we've got everything from rigging in the auditorium to the condensation tank at Central that we're worried about. And that is, I want to point out, those are the kind of major mechanicals, like at Central, the condensation tank. We have been going back and forth with the regional office, building inspectors, that's the kind of thing that has to be fixed regardless of cost. That's just, that's just all there is to it, so we've been doing that, you know, even as we speak. But you can see a number of things that have been getting done, all the way down to new furniture for our dean's office here at East Campus. Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Doing a great job.
He is. And I don't know if Ms. Osce or Ms. Del Ponte have noticed, you know, some of the stairwells, some of the new graphics like in the K hallway, that kind of thing.
They're beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, that would be Dr. Green and Mr. Barley, they're, they didn't, they didn't do it themselves, but it was their vision, you know.
When was that added?
Over the summer. Some new environmental graphics.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number nine?
Some move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shorisma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Simone Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez Keever? Yes. All right, and we have no action considerations. Yes, we're moving on to our policy consideration, press policy 112.
And press policy 112, there is not, you know, quite, not, not really that much. This is quite a bit, these slides are, are really quite a bit of just annual five-year reviews, changes in footnotes, changes in legal references that are important, should be done, but this is a lot of housekeeping, and I'll point out to the board, the policies don't change substantially, just for the public as always. Press is an organization from the Illinois Association of School Boards that on a routine basis looks at changes in laws, changes in federal practices that the board needs to come alongside in terms of policy. They make recommendations to us. We can accept press recommendations, we can make modifications, accept some of their recommendations, keep some of our own, work with our attorneys. We can reject their, their recommendations and say that's not something that we can, we're going to keep with our own policy, it's aligned to state school code, but we're not going to, to accept press recommendations. We do a first reading, you hear about it first time, and then you would actually vote on these policies around next month. The policies that's in your agenda are all of the policies in the raw with the changes. It's the rough draft that the public can see right now and that you can see. So press 112, these policies, all of them are very, very minor. I want to give you some examples of what I mean. Specifically in policy seven colon three zero five, the only change is they changed an acronym. That's it. They changed a word. Policy six 10 changed a website reference. So all of these policies have word changes, but they're of that level. And, you know, I'd be happy to go over them with you, but we would probably be, a word that was singular is now plural, those are the kind of changes. But they, strangely enough, not strangely enough, if it changes a word in the policy, it requires board approval. The policies that do have a change, this is significant, this is actually a policy not in press, but we would like you to approve because law has changed that with purchases and contracts, we can increase the bid limit from $25,000 to $35,000, meaning if the board doesn't approve this, we would have to stick at that bid threshold as $25,000. So anything at $25,000 or above in the world of contracted work, big, you know, projects that size, without this change, we'd have to stay at $25,000 instead of going up to $35,000, which the law now allows us to do. Gives Mr. Thompson a lot more flexibility in terms of projects under $35,000 do not necessarily need to go out to bid.
You know when the last time that was changed?
Gosh, $25,000, Mr. Borzma.
It's probably long time.
Forever. I mean, I think almost when I started teaching, to be honest with you.
And there's actually two pieces to the bid limits. This is the contractual bid limit for like most contracts, but construction, you know, projects are, there was $50,000 bid limit, they did not increase that.
Right.
They only increased this particular limit, so.
So it's really taking advantage of them. Five colon two 30, this is maintaining student discipline. We align, we have, we have parts of our contractual agreements with our union that speak to discipline procedures, and so there are very minor changes in press, but we want to make sure that the contract, whether we have with our educational support professionals and our licensed professionals lines up. So we just don't approve the press policy and toss out the link to our collective bargaining agreements. So we are bringing into the press policy the collective bargaining agreements that the board has already approved in negotiations. Policy six colon one 90, it makes a change, a significant change in extracurricular and co-curricular activities. We remove the statement in alignment with state law, this statement, membership is limited to students actively enrolled full time in the district. That has changed. Your current policy states that any part-time student could not participate in activities and sports. State law has changed. We do have some families that are part-time, and we felt that if it allows part-time porters to be involved in sports and activities, that that's good, that we would recommend that change.
So we're taking the full time out?
So we're taking the full time out.
So what is considered part time?
Part time on our schedule is four or more classes, or four, or you can look at it less, two. You know, anything that, part time would be anything less than eight at Central, seven class periods, six class periods, seven class periods, Central, East, so anything less than that would be considered part time.
I don't know if this pertains to this, but say homeschool kids, can they?
Exactly. There are certain situations where homeschool students can participate. They're limited, there's some IHSA limitations, full homeschool, right? But a very typical thing that we see, Mr. Borzma, is, you know, I'm a parent and I homeschool my child for X amount of classes, but my child has high abilities in math and science, I'm not able to do that, so I part time enroll my students into some high ability math and science classes. Without that policy change, that would exclude that part-time student.
But they, so they would still have to be part-time at the school?
Right. And some of that is governed by what the IHSA has decided about homeschool students and competition. That's the biggest issue.
So anybody with four or less classes is considered part-time, is there any?
And no, anybody that has less than a full load, right, is part-time of some level, right? So at Central, it's seven classes, if you have less than seven classes, you're going to be a part-time student, you can go all the way down, right? So of some kind, you're not full time. But you were previously excluding those students from competition activities, which we would encourage you not to do that, change. Six colon 30, this is what Dr. Christopher just presented on, reflecting current local, state and local graduation requirements, the piece on biology, and also I would encourage you to explicitly put in your policy 40 hours of community service, if that's how you feel about it. It has not been in policy, it's been in procedures, and I would approve it in policy. Seven colon two 75, this is orders to forego life sustaining treatment. This is rare in my career. I have had, I've worked with students who have a DNA, DNR, do not resuscitate order, and what this does is it adds a statement. We would encourage you to add this, we're not required to add this, but we think it's important, and here's the statement. And we can add this, this is an option that press gives them. Superintendent does need to ensure minutes are taken that summarize the decisions and guidelines made during multidisciplinary meetings and obtain signatures of the child's parents, guardians on the minutes of each multidisciplinary meeting. What that means is if we have a meeting with a family and we discuss, and it's usually a student with special needs, but it's not an IEP meeting, we discuss a do not resuscitate order. In essence, we feel it's important to take minutes at that meeting and have everyone sign off, that everyone knows exactly what we mean when we see do not resuscitate. You know, that's a, that's a big issue when you're saying you're not going to provide life-saving care for a student who might, might even be a minor. So every, there should be minutes at that meeting, and everyone should sign off on those.
Do we have to reflect it?
We do not currently have any do not resuscitate.
Yeah, I went through these, I didn't understand that completely.
Right. They use a phrase called multidisciplinary meeting, that's a state phrase, a press phrase. What that means is if you had that situation, you would likely bring that teacher's, all that teacher's students, case manager, parents, probably the student, her or himself, all together, and that's the multidisciplinary meeting. So everybody understands what we are doing here, right? You know, for example, I had a DNR on a student when I was a principal who had to be reclined at all times. The student had a brain issue, or basically if the student was upright, the brain would crush the brain stem. That child had a do not resuscitate. And everybody had to understand, because you know most human beings, when a student, if that ever happened to that student, that student immediately go into respiratory distress. I think everybody in this room would want to revive that student, right? So it's a serious thing. That's questions thoughts, first read.
All right, and then announcements.
Announcements, okay. Friday night, Plainfield North, away game, first football game. We'll be monitoring heat carefully. Obviously, Plainfield North is in the same heat zone we are. Exciting. Monday, August 28th, Finance Facility Committee is going to meet here. We've invited members of the Citizens Advisory Council on Central to join us. We've got about five or six of those members who are going to come as well, going to walk out, you know, some of those plans with Central. And we'll be reversing that flow that Dr. Green mentioned. We'll be meeting with our union, getting their eyes on what we're talking about, meeting with the teachers and department chairs who participated in that development, returning to students on Wednesday as my superintendent's advisory council will be coming back to you as well. Saturday, September 2nd, I put it in here, we don't have to, you know, talk it out tonight, but, you know, fall board workshop, I don't, you know, the past the board year fall board workshop has been a longer day, you know, sometimes eight to like two or three. I would recommend kind of a life breakfast thing where we can really help you dive into equal opportunity schools. We do not have a home football game until September 8th, Naperville Central. Good news, Dr. McBride has never lost to Naperville Central away. But as a high school principal, I have never won when a team that I am working with has played in that, that horrible stadium on their campus, so that's good for me, you know, I guess. September 1st, we, we, that's the way game. September 12th, Curriculum Committee is meeting at 5:30, we'll be talking about Central too in the curriculum, and then finally, September 18th.
All right. Thank you. All right, then do I have a motion to adjourn this night meeting?
Make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Mr. Borzma. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eight forty-nine.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Great, thanks so much, everyone. Congratulations.